Which is what it used to be. So I think that, you know, that's the thing to keep in mind. Gas prices are down right now, but the Fed can't control them and they might rise again. And the same thing could be said for many parts of the economy, that the Fed can only control somewhat. And so that is why the Fed is so focused on wrestling inflation the whole way back down to its very low and stable goal and keeping it there in sort of a much more sustainable You want to know that policy is working and working in a way that you intend, and we just aren't quite there yet.
Right. You really don't want to live in a world, you're saying, where your inflation goes down because of luck. You want it to sustainably go down because of policy so that it truly stays down.
Yeah. Luck can be good or bad. Policy is much more deliberate.
Well, Gina, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Gina Smiling writes about economic policy for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Bitwarden, currently in use by tens of thousands of IT professionals around the world. Bitwarden is designed to securely and safely store employees' passwords and logins with end-to-end encryption. More at bitwarden.com.
Innovative, immersive, and skillfully investigated, The Daily brings listeners today's stories as only The New York Times can report them. For more on today's episode, go to nytimes.com/thedaily.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobardo. See you tomorrow.
Morning Edition from NPR News helps you start your day informed and even inspired. Wake up to broader horizons. Listen to Morning Edition every weekday.
Morning Edition comes your way weekday mornings from 5 to 9 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City-Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WBTS Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
The Southern Baptist Convention, the nation's largest Protestant denomination, overwhelmingly voted to oust women from church leadership. It also recently expelled a handful of churches for having female pastors.
It feels like being kicked out of the family, perhaps even like a divorce is one of my...
called to order. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Voloson?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And Quam is present. The invocation tonight will be delivered by the Reverend Anthony Swan, is Reverend Swan here? Okay. Campus pastor of the Vine Church. And following the invocation, I will lead you into the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for Swan.
Shall we pray? Fathers, in Jesus' name, God, we thank you for another city council meeting. We're asking you, God, that you would rain down, God, wisdom and knowledge and understanding, God, for your councilmen and your councilwomen, God, to make wise choices and wise decision for your people, God, in the marketplace. I'm asking you, God, that you would allow them to hear the heart of your people, God, as they come forth, God, that the decisions may be made for their best interests. God, we believe you, God, in what you're going to do in the midst of this city council meeting, and we count it done. In Jesus' name, our prayer and acts. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Welcome, everybody, to our second session of the day. We've had a very spirited meeting, and I've been sitting in this chair, in this building, since right after 1 o'clock. I haven't been outside.
It's been raining.
Yeah. All right. Well, I sometimes hope for a week won't be long tonight. All right. The first order of business tonight is to certify the closed meeting. So I'll call on the council members, read that certification and a second.
I move with respect to any closed meetings just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters are, as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
Is this second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
I understand.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Voloson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right. Thank you all for that. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the bid opening. Bid submitted for a 60-year air rights lease for installation of a pedestrian crosswalk over South Jefferson Street Southwest. And I'll call on the clerk to open the bids.
All right. I will read the bid.
Yes, ma'am.
The date of this is June 16th, 2023. Carillion Medical Center, a Virginia non-stock corporation, proposes and agrees, if its bid is accepted, to enter into and be bound by the lease of air rights located in City of Roanoke over a portion of South Jefferson Street Southwest, a copy of which is on file in the office of the city clerk for the City of Roanoke, Room 456 Noel C. Taylor Municipal Building, 215 Church Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia 24011. Furthermore, the undersigned bidder warrants that it can and will comply with the provisions of the air rights lease. The bid, bidder agrees to pay the City of Roanoke a one-time payment in the amount of $500 to the... to the... and it says here, if it bids, is if this bid is accepted by city council, the bidder agrees, the rent payments will be paid in accordance with the schedule of payments set forth in Section 2 of the air rights lease.
All right. There are no additional bids, so we're to declare the bid opening closed and refer the sole bid to the city manager for his review, evaluation, and recommendation to the council. And the public hearing regarding the bid will be held tonight.
Yes.
At 7:00 PM, our 7:00 PM session. All right. All right. The next item on our agenda is Evan Springs Planning Process Update. Let me, let me make sure you all understand the ground rules for this. This presentation tonight is meant for council. We'll be asking questions on it, but it's not at the normal, it won't be the normal process where you all will be able to comment. This first session will be for city council. I'll refer to the city manager shortly. You all have signed up to speak on the hearing of citizens, on hearing of citizens tonight. That's later. That's probably the last thing we're going to have on the agenda. But right now, this process is for city council to ask questions because we'll be introduced to some things that we haven't heard before. All right? So with that being said, and everybody understands the ground rules, if not, then I have a gavel up here to say, that's not the way we're going to do it. All right? And I'll, and so with that, I'm going to introduce our city manager, Bob Coward, that will introduce us to the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And I will give just a very, very brief kind of overview of where we are and how we got here, and then hand it over to Chris, who will introduce the consultant team that will give you the briefing. First, I'm going to preface this by saying we are seeking no action this evening. This is a process that is not yet complete. We're still working through the process. This is just an opportunity for you to hear from the consultant team that has been working on the project and get an update from them, as well as provide reaction to some of the items that they are going to introduce to you, and also an opportunity for you to ask directly of them any questions that you might have as you go through. So again, no action is going to be requested, no action is going to be taken tonight as well. Also want to remind everyone that we begin, we began this process not from a blank slate. In other words, council has, as a body, already established policy for this area, just as they have for every other part of the city, and that policy is provided through our comprehensive plan, as well in this case, in the neighborhood plan that was created specifically for, for this portion of the city, just as we have neighborhood plans all over other parts of the city, and other plans that also have impact or could have impact on this particular area. For example, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So again, we're not starting this with a blank slate. We're starting this with established policy by the council. What the, the city partnering with the Economic Development Authority and partnering with the owners of the private land that we're talking about in this case, came together and actually have retained a consultant team. The purpose of the retention of the consultant team was to see if there was a way in which they could engage with area residents and other stakeholders to translate those policy documents that I just mentioned into a more specific master plan. If you go and look at the neighborhood plan or the master plans, it's going to be a fairly general area. It's going to say this area roughly to be preserved, this area roughly to be done, used for housing, or whatever it might be. But it's not specific enough to turn into any kind of development plan proposal that would have really any chance of, of any kind of adequate review, because it's not able to be specific. So the effort here that we're going through is actually to see if indeed there can be a master plan that is arrived at. This is not a development plan, meaning at the end of it, it's not going to suddenly turn into a zoning hearing. That would have to follow this as well, to take these ideas that would come from any kind of master plan. The property owners would actually have to come forward and request any kind of rezoning on the property, and it would require an even more detailed plan as you go through. So that's kind of how this fits within sort of that, that larger kind of sphere of things. So, so that's the purpose of why those partners have come together to fund the, the study and the work that the team has been doing over the last several months on this effort as well. So with, with that kind of background, turn it over to Chris so that Chris can introduce the team, and then we'll have the consultant team work their way through the, the presentation and ask any questions that you might have as well. So, thank you.
Chris, before you come, I'm always pleased to recognize members of the planning commission that are here. I see Mr. Smith, I see Mr. Cabler in the back, back there. Good to see you all out tonight.
Frank Martin is here. Uh, so.
Frank Martin.
Okay. So Martin, raise your hand.
Any other comments, Mr.?
All right. Good to see you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we did invite them here so they would have the benefit also of this briefing, kind of a twofer. So they will be involved in this process, obviously, as the planning commission. So where we are now, we started this process of the actual planning, got a, got the consultant under contract back in December. They started some of the background work that you really don't see, but mobilizing in, in January and started the community outreach program in, in January and February. Had a large, very well-attended community meeting at Williams Memorial Church in the Millrose Rugby Neighborhood. I think we had well over 130 people. Might have set a record. So that was a, a, a good, good turnout. They've also done a lot of things in the background with small meetings with, with community, people in the community and people who are stakeholders. So they'll, they'll cover some of that ground tonight. So we're about half, we're a little bit over halfway through the process. We're, we're set to schedule to wrap this effort up and have some form of plan by November, by the time that rolls around, so late fall. So with that, I'll turn it over to the consulting team. Bill Meshnick, well, he's with Land Planning Development Design Associates, and he's the, they're the lead among several partners that he has. And I'll let him introduce those partners in the process. So, Bill?
Appreciate it. Chris, and good evening, esteemed members, council, mayor, city manager, and clerk. I appreciate the opportunity to give you all an update tonight. It's been quite a process so far. There's a lot of complexity and detail here. We're going to run through it pretty quickly. You know, it's up to you if you want to, you know, interrupt with questions or not. But basically, the mission tonight is to give you a summary of the work done to date. Each team member that I have is going to give a report back. We're going to talk about sort of general approaches and strategies that are starting to look feasible. Sorry. Okay. And then we'll also kind of talk about next steps that are coming up. And I'm hoping I have my remote team with me tonight. I see their pictures, so that's a good sign.
This one. That's the correct one?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep. Apparently we have the dummy version. I don't know. So that's the basic agenda, and then Q and A. So I think, I think the city manager covered most of this, what our goal was. You know, generally, project context is that, you know, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts here. You have a lot of plans in place, you know, presently. This is one of the last undeveloped sites in, in the city, juxtaposed next to the interstate. There are opportunities and constraints, you know, that, that, that you all see, that the community sees, both the neighborhood, the community at large, and, and the city, as well as, as well as the landowners. But our general objective is to align with some of those other plans and studies that you've created that start to define goals and objectives for this process. Generally, our job was to deliver a objective study that, that struck a balance, right, between different scenarios, between neighborhood needs, and how the project would be potentially performed and by who. And that would involve looking at economics, the development market, performance, and things like that, as well as the economic impacts, hopefully positive, balanced against some of the other potential impacts that development of the property would be. So it was really kind of about return, you know, balancing community needs, city needs with return on investment, you know, goals for property owners and others that might develop it. So we're looking at, again, the dialogue with the community to get that input. We're looking at the realities of property rights and economics. We're looking at the infrastructure, which is a big issue on this site with the, with the interchange. And we're also really looking in the spirit of previous neighborhood plans and the Evan Springs Plan to really create a place that adds value and long-term value to the community and the neighborhood at large. Development team was very diverse, kind of similar to the goals. Land planning and design is the lead for this. We're, we're a land planner. We specialize in development work as well as public amenity work. We have economic economists and markets strategists on our team with RKG. We have folks that specialize in community engagement, as well as planning of downtowns and entrepreneurship development with downtown economics and community charrette and engagement associates. We also have some traffic and transportation planners and civil engineers who specialize in, you know, just that. So all those folks are with us tonight. Relevant efforts, as you know, city manager mentioned some of these. You have several that start to define sort of the framework for some of the decision-making in, in this regard. Also include, you know, there was a local, various neighborhood plans, as well as a specific Evan Springs area plan, and the current draft plan for the ROA, the Roanoke Opportunities in Action Plan for your economic development strategic plans. These are some of the goals paraphrased in various plans. They're not all specific to each plan, but those are paraphrased. You can read, I believe. Schedule-wise, I think Chris and the, and city manager talked about this a little bit. We are about halfway through, maybe more. It's basically a nine-month process. We started in January in earnest. We plan to finish up this process in September, hopefully, with a responsive plan that balances, again, community needs with the realities of the site and market and economics. Here we, the red line is where we are now in the process, June 20th, June 22nd, Thursday night. We also have a neighborhood meeting to follow up on this meeting to give the neighborhood the same update we're giving you all now and have a dialogue about paths moving forward. Work to date, a lot of site analysis, a lot of market analysis, a lot of public engagement, stakeholder meetings, that sort of thing, running in parallel. So we're really in the analysis phase now and starting to formulate some key objectives that we'll talk about later that we're going to have to try to meet with, with this plan. So we've done a pretty detailed analysis, looking at all the typical factors, a desktop, looking at your soils, hydrology, topography, infrastructure, to come up, ownership, to come up with an idea of what we're really looking at in terms of the potential of this property for development, or whatever it might be, you know, for whatever land uses. So basic summary is just over 150 acres of total, total acreage between the two parcels. And we've got about 44 or 45 acres that are encumbered by flood plain, floodways, steep slopes, things like that, which generally leaves about 100, just over 100 acres potentially, you know, developable. We started looking at the previous 2020 rezoning and trying to dissect that in terms of the breakdown of land uses and densities and yields and things like that. Things generally lined up with our methodology and kind of led us to then sort of a, a, a list of test land uses that we could start to look at, market feasibility, traffic counts, you know, and things like that. So next up is Russ from RKG, and he'll, he's done the market research and findings, which is going to set up the further analysis for economic impacts. So hopefully Russ is here.
Yes. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, city council, mayor. I'm not going to be very long with my comments tonight. I did want to give you some context for the market and growth potential that we see at this site. So let me do that. We have a lot of program to sort of get through. But suffice it to say that we sort of went back and looked from 2000 to the present to see the level of activity occurring in the development markets, looking at growth in population overall. Roanoke has been growing at a very slow rate, on the order of 0.34% per year over the last decade, a little slower than the county and the state. But neither of those locations have been growing very fast either. I would say a 1% growth rate annually would be a nice, steady, sustainable growth rate.
Russ, do you mind sharing your screen? I actually clicked off your part of the presentation. I don't know if you can share your screen or not, if you have your slide up. Otherwise, we'll move back to the presentation.
Why don't you move back to what you were going off of? I didn't see it, so I...
Understood, understood. Yeah, I was just, sorry for the...
It's okay. So in the context of the site and the city and its geographic location, Roanoke as a market, so it's a market of regional significance, you all know that, in southwest Virginia has a drawing capability or capacity that extends 20 to 40 miles, depending on the market, depending on the direction. So it's significant, and this site is significant, given its interstate access. However, right now, we don't have that. Once we get that, I think it sort of steps right up to the top of the list as significant. There are several competitive advantages that the site lends itself to. It really is sort of wants to be a retail site. It is right across from the mall, so this is an area where people come to shop. In another lifetime, maybe another market context, this would have been a premier office location. But the office market nationally, statewide, and regionally is not doing well, and it will be a while before that shakes out. Vacancy rates are about 25% and could go up from here. The development pipeline has two larger multifamily developments that will come online over the next three to five years. So we're thinking that this might be a location for multifamily, and it could be. We have some competitors that are sort of making their way through the system a little quicker than we are. But over the next 10 years, by the end of the decade, we certainly would have that opportunity if, if people wanted to go that direction. Now, from a market standpoint, like I said, this sort of wants to be a retail location because its visibility, its location, its access. Over the next 10 years, we would anticipate there may be demand. Now, if you look at historical development in the retail market, there has been some activity since 2000 and some since 2010. There's probably a handful of markets that are, that have seen some activity, industrial, office, retail, multifamily, hospitality. Those are the most active ones, and they all have some opportunity at this location. The multifamily market, what we've seen in, in Roanoke is that we have an older housing stock on, in, in general. It's, it was sort of almost a 50/50 split in terms of owner occupants versus renters. What we think the opportunity may be would be for new contemporary apartment communities to come online. That would in some way make some of the older properties less viable. So I think you have to consider that, but I think there's demand there if that were to happen. You hear, you may have heard people talking about missing middle housing, which is not something that a lot of communities are building nowadays. It's probably an older development form from an earlier era, but it tends to be duplexes, triplexes, three-to-five unit apartment buildings. These are sort of smaller scale. And they're called missing middle because they just don't show up in a lot of communities and no one's building to them. But they're in demand, and you don't have a lot of them in your community. So the question is, is there potential here? I think there might be, and it might be a good transition from the existing single-family neighborhoods into what might be a commercial development with some other types of housing dispersed in that. It's very much a mixed-use opportunity here for you all. In the office market, I think, who's the discount, the potential that an end user might see this as a, as a premier location or a one-off location that they need to be at? However, there's not a lot of those, and I would not expect that to sort of rise to the surface. But you can't rule it out, and it has a lot of factors and attributes that people be looking for. Finally, there's a, there may be a need for a business class hotel, restaurant destinations, entertainment. All of these are sort of complementary uses that have some potential here. It really depends on what the theme of the development is. And we haven't gotten there yet, but I think based on your feedback tonight and the curiosities of later in the week, I think we'll start to move quickly toward what that building program is. So that's, in a nutshell, sort of our observations at this point. So that's, in a nutshell, sort of our observations at this point. We're also coming back later in the project and giving you an assessment of the economic and fiscal impacts associated with whatever development program is out there. So you'll have some way of measuring whether or not this is a fiscally good move or one that could demand more services than you anticipate. Bill?
Great, appreciate it, Russ. So next up is Bill Lynch here, is our traffic planner. You know, based on some land use scenarios, both the 2020 rezoning and some other more neighborhood responsive versions that we started to play with, Bill's come up with some traffic analysis and specifically related to, some analysis related to the interchange.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening. I'm Bill Lynch with EPR. And as Bill said, I'm going to give you the briefing on the traffic analysis to date. Let me see if I can go the right direction here. Yeah, so, starting off, kind of big picture, immediate questions, right? How do you, how do you deal with the interchange? And what's it going to cost? So we've worked through some preliminary, high-level planning-type estimates. There's a lot of variables out there regarding, you know, topography and ground, underground conditions and the like. But basically, what we're coming up with as an estimate is a pretty large investment. We're thinking a bridge structure. So you've got a lot on structure to match up to that existing interchange and also to cross that deep ravine and meet grade. So we're talking probably 50 million plus. We considered the option of fill with walls and culverts, but there's some environmental factors that we're a little eerie about with the floodplain there. And also, the expenses come up in our estimates higher than the bridge estimate. So just starting to get some of the initial investments to get into that site, pretty significant. Another thing we're looking at is suppose you connect to that bridge, connect over to, say, 19th Street, just as a point of termination, and you build nothing, right? How much traffic might come? It's kind of a baseline condition. So we used the regional demand model and some other methodologies, and our prediction would be about 7,000 cars a day coming between the neighborhood and the interchange. And it's not necessarily new traffic. It's traffic that's redistributed from the other routes accessing the interchange, you know, crossing 581. So it could be neighborhood traffic, basically traffic that was going out or around, and now it comes up through the middle. So it's just sort of a baseline thing to know, about 7,000 cars a day on that road if you just built it with...
Let me ask you something, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you all have that little red light that you could...
Yeah.
Put that picture while you're talking.
Yes, sir. Maybe. I'm going to press the wrong button. Shouldn't hear the...
I'm pretty pushing here, man.
All right.
There's green ones out there.
There's green ones. Okay, whoops, moved here, back up. So was there anything in particular at the moment or just as we move forward, I can use it?
As you move forward, yeah.
Yes, sir. All right. So to start to get a feel of traffic conditions and traffic shifts, we looked into really four different development scenarios that were outlined by Bill and his crew. And the first two are very similar to one another. That's up here. This is where we've connected to the interchange. These are two diagrams of the first and second scenarios. We connect to the interchange and we have a connection through to the neighborhood area. Then in addition to that, there's a mix of commercial and residential units. For instance, these are approximations here, but, you know, 300 dwelling units, about 300,000 square feet of commercial, you know, 50,000 to 100,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial. And then we also looked at another scenario of not connecting. So this is where we connect to the interchange, but the commercial area is not connected to the residential, the neighborhoods to the south. Although there would be some amount of neighborhood commercial-type services, development and residential units on the neighborhood side, if you follow that. So, you know, the connection doesn't go through the neighborhood, but yet there's still some less intense commercial and residential type uses. So, and then the last scenario is the buy right. Suppose you just build what you could out there by right, you don't connect to the interchange. All right. So looking at these, we start to develop a number set and start to compare, what does this mean for the different traffic shifts and traffic volumes on the roads leading to and from, in and out of the neighborhood and such? And just by a point of comparison, the first two concepts generate after considering internal capture. So this is, you know, if you have residential and commercial that interact with one another, they never really leave the site. So we reduce for all of that. You know, 21,000 trips, concept three, which is not connecting but stuff on both sides, pretty similar, you know, 22,000 trips-ish, I'm going to use round numbers here. The buy right's much lower, 3,100 trips. And just to compare, the last traffic study you saw had about 20,000 trips in it as well. So it's comparable in traffic generation. So where we can start to draw for conclusions here, and I will steady my hand best I can, let's pick on 19th Street. It's an easy road that we're all pretty comfortable with, I think. So concept one and two, if we don't, well, first of all, if we don't do anything, the traffic increases from 1,300 cars a day today, no, 1,500, to 1,700 cars a day in 2045. So we're pivoting off of 2045. If, where did we go here? If we just build the interchange and nothing else, that traffic jumps up to about 7,000 cars a day, so roughly four times, you know, four times what it is today, just for more through traffic. Likewise, if we go with concept one or two, which remember, that's connected to the interchange, connected to the neighborhood, we start to see the volumes increase, I'm sorry, from up to about 11,000 cars a day. So we've gone, you know, another increment of traffic here. Concept three is less, 57. So we provide a comparison in the documentation here. So these are just numbers, right? So I mean, what does this mean? So, well, first of all, I've got another slide that'll get to that. But one thing important to know is you all weigh your decisions and think about things is what does this mean for investments? So you know you're going to have some road improvements, one way or another. What happens with, you know, 19th, is it 19th and Andrews, right? Right at the school? So at the 10,000 car a day level, I mean, you're thinking about turn lanes, maybe a traffic signal or a roundabout. It's not, you know, it's not super intense, and I'll provide some comparisons here in the next slide. But definitely, there's going to be some investments needed in additional capacity on the roads. So we provide a comparison here of, you know, concepts one and two. Obviously, you've got the largest investments because you've got the most traffic interacting throughout the system there. Concept three, again, that's the divided network, lesser degree, and obviously, the buy right is a pretty minor, pretty minor impact. So pulling this into some graphics here, when we talk about investments on 19th Street, you know, on the, on the school end of it, this is using GIS, what you have in your GIS system there, looks like about 74 feet of right-of-way. So you've got a lot of right-of-ways. You go further away from the school, it narrows. So the types of investments might be, you know, providing a median, obviously some sidewalks and bicycle facilities of some type. And the timing gets more critical with the more intense development, but this is generally sort of a guide for just relating it to 19th Street. Then if we take that a step further and we say, well, I don't know what 10,000 cars a day feels like, here's some ideas for you. So 19th Street, you know, again, today it's pretty low, 1,500. But if it grows to 11,000, well, that's like the traffic volumes on your Melrose Avenue today. So this is, you can kind of feel the difference, right? It's more relatable than numbers, I think. So putting it in terms of something we can all kind of relate to. Yeah, so if you're familiar with your, with your local street, Melrose here, you know, 4,000 cars a day, this is Ordway, just another one of the streets in a network that we did some projections for. So today it's, you know, 2,400 cars a day. Well, that would double, would feel a bit more like Piedmont Street, if you're familiar, if you can relate to that. So we provide some guidance in the documentation to relate these traffic growth amounts to some of your existing streets as a way to kind of feel your way through that. So I'm going to move on from traffic into some of the stormwater issues. And I have on the phone on the line here, Lynette Lynch with our office. She's one of our engineers who met with your staff, one of your staff people out there in the field and looked at it all. She's going to keep me straight here because I'm not a stormwater person, but I will give you some information here and if, well, that's good, if I go straight to keep me straight. Looking for my glasses. Sorry. All right. Yep, put my eyeballs back on. So really, when you think about development there, there is an opportunity. There's an opportunity to partner with the development community to fix some of the things that are not right in that environmental area, the Lick Run basin. When you think about Lick Run right now, per their field review, the stream is not in good condition. There's a lot of debris in it, stream bank conditions are poor. However, with a development project, you could partner with the developer to fix those, and that would be a recommendation. You have an existing regional stormwater facility that's not doing a great job at what it needs to be doing. There's some upgrades that should occur, and again, there's an opportunity with development to help remedy the conditions there as well as with the wetlands in there. Those should be delineated, studied further, remediated, and again, we bring this up as an opportunity with the development. And in fact, with that, you could even, you know, establish a well-designed green belt adjacent to the stream there versus what you have down there now. So with that, that's another view of traffic and some of the environmental factors. So Bill, back to you.
Yeah, I'll just introduce the next folks real quick, and I wanted to recap some of those, sorry, some of those numbers that Bill covered. Again, we did look at the no-connection option, and if you notice that, you know, the connected was 10,900, the no-connected dropped to about 5,700 on to 19th. So, you know, that's something to, you know, we are playing with those kind of scenarios to really see what works best and what can work best for mitigating impacts or limiting impact. So next up, I have Veronica and Chuck from Community Engagement and Sherret Associates, who have been really doing the yeoman's work here to engage with the community.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. My name is Chuck Dupree. I'm principal of a firm called Downtown Economics. And you may know, we did some neighborhood center studies here over the last year. We were engaged to do community engagement. I'm also lucky enough to be partner with my colleague Veronica, who will give you the details of our community engagement effort, to be partner in Community Engagement and Sherret Associates. We only focus on community engagement. So knowing we needed to have a robust, we heard, we listened to the council, we listened to the city staff, knew we needed a robust community engagement effort, so that's what we've undertaken. As Chris said, we had a well-attended meeting on March 9th, and that was sort of the kickoff for this engagement effort. We did an online survey, and Veronica will give you the details on that. We did a number of focus groups. We dug into the neighborhoods and also listened to folks on a one-on-one basis. We did key informant interviews from folks in the neighborhood. We had drop boxes around the neighborhoods and strategic locations where people could fill out the survey and drop them off. We had a telephone line where people could call in and offer their information. And I know that I received any number of calls from people and spent a considerable amount of time listening to people and their opinions on the project. The other thing which we'll be doing from the Downtown Economics side is an entrepreneurship plan for folks in the neighborhood who want to start a business. And we'll look at that in terms of micro-enterprise, some folks that have businesses running out of their houses now, and how we can move them to perhaps another location and incubate them and launch them. With that said, I'm going to introduce my partner Veronica Fleming, who is going to talk about the results that we uncovered in this process.
Thanks, Chuck, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. City Manager, and community members and leaders. I do want to first acknowledge that there's a great deal of work that was done by leaders of the civic associations. Without them, this work could not be done, and we would not have attempted it without folks like Cheryl Hilton, Stephen Niomke, Constance Crutchfield, all folks you know, Reverend Kathy O'Keefe, Reverend David Jones, Mike Bentley, all of those folks who allowed us to be diverse and inclusive in terms of the engagement that we attempted. So as Chuck mentioned, we did surveys, key informant interviews, and focus groups to try to make sure that we covered the landscape. It's important to understand a couple of things. If you're addressing true, authentic feedback from a community, especially a community that's impacted by the kind of project you're suggesting, that the most impactful way to get information is to talk directly to people. Interviews, survey, and not necessarily surveys, interviews, key informant groups, and door-to-door, which is, we weighted that heavily. And so what I wanted to say, so we did online survey responses. I would say we did about 1,000 surveys in the, we initiated about 1,000 forms in the community. Online survey responses were the primary way that we got feedback. We got about 350 responses. So we got about 30% response from those online surveys. There are challenges with doing an online survey. People don't tend to respond to them as well as we'd like to see, but we got a 30% response, which is not bad. We generally expect about a 25% response. So it's important to take a look at where, kind of where people were who responded to those surveys. So the locations, from the Roanoke area, about 66% from southwest Virginia, 15%, Maryland, 10%, Richmond, 4%, others in Virginia, 5%, 3%, and that kind of thing. So fully 66% were from the actual Roanoke area and about 35% from other areas. The racial identity of the folks who responded, 64% of the respondents were white or Caucasian, 22% African-American, 10% Latino, 4% other. Look again at the age groups of those who responded, and you see that the largest percent of the respondents were between ages 31 and 40, and then you move to those 40 to 50 and then over 61. So the response type tells a story. I do want to suggest that in the survey, in the key informant groups and in the focus groups, we hit about between 150, 200 people in those, in those groups, that 90% of those folks were African-American, about 10% Caucasian, about 70% were from the northwest community, and about 30% were from Roanoke at large. So we conducted eight focus groups. We had the March 9th community meeting, which was referenced, and we did focus groups at about nine or 10 tables. We conducted 16 door-to-door and one-on-one discussions. And this is what we heard. We heard in certain common themes. We heard common themes in areas of addressing the natural habitat, in areas of housing, commercial development, recreation, and traffic. So we heard a great desire to preserve the tree canopy. There's a great deal of concern about the heat island impact on that community, and that needs to be acknowledged. We heard protect the wildlife. We heard protect and preserve the waterway, especially Lick Run, and protect the floodplain. In terms of housing, we heard that people don't want to see... In terms of housing, we heard that people don't want to see large gigantic high-rises, what they want are economically friendly, affordable housing, great deal of interest in seeing senior housing, small footprint homes, not high-rises. In terms of commercially, there is a great deal of interest in promoting small locally-owned businesses, entrepreneurship opportunities, neighborhood-based grocery stores, restaurants, ice cream shops, theaters, kind of a town center-type feel. Recreation, walkable environment, walking paths, nature center, some efforts to provide clean drinking water, we heard the clean water for drinking and swimming and use, we heard that a lot. We heard developing parks and trails that connect directly to and from the neighborhood, child, adult, senior activities within the park. Traffic, we heard loudly, direct traffic away from the neighborhood, we heard loudly, no link from 581 into the neighborhood, we heard loudly, prepare the roadways that We want to honor the fact that there is significant opposition to development, especially from the surveys, and especially from the March, at the March 9th community meeting, just no development at all was the predominant feel. However, when you dig deep, and when folks acknowledge that in fact some development is likely to happen there, people were very intentional about saying what they did and did not want to see. So there are also groups that completely opposed to any kind of commercial development on that site, but what you also heard is that if there is commercial development, small business, small kind of neighborhood-focused, neighborhood-friendly type of businesses. And as Chuck mentioned, there are a good deal of phone calls to, around this engagement to the community, to the team, in the middle of the night about what folks did and did not want to see. And so we welcome, we welcome that kind of engagement. So we did, there are some specific recommendations made, because people have seen the kinds of things that they'd like to see around in other communities. Neighborhood stores, footprints similar to Crystal Springs, small housing with front porches sized and friendly to families such as that, like the Rural Studio in Louisiana. Creating natural pools such as Berkeley Springs, I actually grew up in a neighborhood in New Jersey that had a natural pool, it's a beautiful thing. And if you build any new commercial development, why not build it at the uncompleted Top Hill Non-negotiables, very loudly, do not create a link from 581 into the neighborhood, do not take any housing from the current neighborhood residents, do not run traffic through the neighborhood, create strategies to mitigate gentrification. So before we move on to the next, the final thing that I want to say is that we've made a specific recommendation that the city begin the process of rebuilding trust between the city and the neighborhood. We've got some very specific recommendations that we have made to city officials, there are models all across the country. It is, from our perspective, both a top-down and bottom-up process, it's not one group talking to the other, it's groups working together in collaboration. And we are committed to continuing to work with the city on that process, and the city has expressed a commitment to us, to work with us on this process. So thank you.
All right, so now the work begins, so here we are. So our, you know, our mission moving forward is to take that context again and balance it with real economics, real market needs, real business plans, performas, in the context of actually performing something on the site that meets all these various objectives, right, for the neighborhood, the community at large, the city, as well as the private landowners, and potential development partners. So the context, I guess, you know, the previous land use framework, you know, our initial counts and numbers in terms of densities and yields, you know, proved was sort of in a feasible range, you know, for this site and the developable area. But, you know, the real difference in what we're looking at is the exact mix, you know, the finer points of how that's done, the form of it, the exact mix and that sort of thing. Is it a big box thing, is it neighborhood commercial, that sort of thing? As you know, the previous plan, you know, proposed a pretty direct connection to 19th and Andrews, that was controversial, we've shown you the numbers that confirms that. Based on what we've heard at large, you know, these are kind of potential objectives that we might have. If we are going to try to strike that balance, and we are going to have a mix of uses that pulls a lot of different levers, right, you know, then these are the sort of the land use strategies, limit traffic impacts, preserve the neighborhood. When I say preserve the neighborhood, I mean also respect the character of the neighborhood, its scale, and its style and density as well, and to integrate the neighborhood into the overall development, i.e. making that part of the neighborhood. Protect the environment, obviously, the springs and the floodplain, provide access. I don't think, if this is going to add to the neighborhood, we don't want to shut folks out. The buy right could be that option though, frankly, but we don't want that. The strategy is to provide access to the neighborhood in various ways. Provide recreation amenity, your Parks and Rec folks are interested in this site, you've got Lick Run Greenway, there are undevelopable portions of it in the spring that we feel pretty strongly are going to be, need to be, and can be part of that overall open space plan. Increase housing opportunity, so we need to look at this closer in terms of the mix. Obviously, we could have a very nice mix of homes with a buy right scenario and increased values, but, you know, there is a fear of gentrification, obviously, which will make it too nice, and taxes go up, and the neighborhood becomes affordable. It's a nice location, right? But overall, we want to increase a multitude of housing opportunity for various age groups, various income levels at various densities, and to also look at transitioning density to the existing neighborhood. And then to provide local business opportunity as well, in terms of economic opportunity, entrepreneurship, you know, some focus on the feasible neighborhood goods and services, you know, uses, maybe services, i.e. daycare, things like that, that integrate with, you know, the school and the other uses around the neighborhood. But the caveat with all these things is, again, we're trying to balance all these goals with the, sort of, the way economics and development is performed, and who your development partners on the site might be, whether that's somebody that, you know, like submitted on the last rezoning, or it's somebody that's maybe a little, you know, does different things, right? But these, you know, just sort of pictures of the types of uses, and Russ covered this, but this can be done in a sensitive way, and a way that adds to the neighborhood character. So we started looking at the overall potential land use framework. This is not a plan that we're proposing, this is just a concept that shows sort of land use relationships, right? And in this one, we're looking at the non-connected version, but I want to, this is kind of, I don't know, I don't know what I want to call it, I keep wanting to call it a reverse mullet, okay? So it's business up front and party in the back. So the business up front is the commercial stuff, right, next to the interstate. So that's what that property is suited for, it's right up against the interstate, you don't really want to do a whole bunch of residential development right up against the interstate, and there's also some complicated infrastructure issues, you know, so looking at bending the interchange access potentially, if we can, away from the neighborhood, to reduce some of those impacts, and then serving and providing for that commercial base, right, some of the maybe bigger uses, and allowing neighborhood connections but not having through traffic from the interstate through the neighborhood. So that's, you know, I guess we can, I guess it's the green button, right? So that's kind of, here's the access disconnected. We feel pretty strongly that, again, this open space network is required, is doable and achievable, and again, can add a lot of value to the neighborhood, and, you know, we're comfortable, you know, with that being an integral part, you know, of it. I mentioned the neighborhood access, we still need to look at that, you know, is that just here? Are there, you know, pedestrian-oriented streets that are either connected or maybe not connected to the adjacent neighborhood, where neighbors can walk and bike, you know, to their neighbor's house, to the park, to the greenway, that kind of thing? So there's different versions of that, they might be connected vehicle-wise and traffic-calmed, parallel parking, street trees, sidewalks, that kind of thing. Or they might be, you know, disconnected, only pedestrian-only, depending on, you know, further analysis of traffic impacts. I mentioned the environmental zones, that can be achieved, maximizing, you know, the open space, I think that can be achieved if we're able to be flexible with densities, right? If we're doing, you know, different models of development, we're looking at potentially cluster development, zero lot lines, smaller lots, we're looking at potentially attached single-family, and potentially buildings that are multifamily, but not the typical large three, four-story garden apartment, you know, type situation, right up against the neighborhood. So there's a lot of opportunity to transition density on the site, back into the interior of the site, that respects the character, you know, and scale of the neighborhood. So we feel pretty good about that, we feel pretty good about integrating some of those open spaces. And I guess the last thing, which is really going to depend on, you know, is providing, you know, some opportunity for business and entrepreneurship in the neighborhood, I think we can do that. Again, that's going to be, needs some further study, Chuck will be doing that plan with us, but also, you know, Russ is chiming in on sort of what's viable from the overall, overall, you know, market, what he's seeing in the numbers. But, so that's going to require further study, and that's why we have Chuck doing the entrepreneurship plan. But there's opportunity to integrate that, you know, potentially up on the obvious corner, right, up at Andrews and 19th, and at various scales, right, and various uses. Maybe a neighborhood scale grocer works there, maybe it doesn't, you know, we have to dig into that more. Maybe there's a daycare, maybe there's a business incubation center, maybe there's some first-floor, you know, shops and office and retail that are integrated into a little more dense, you know, housing area. So that, all these little bubbles and areas will change as we kind of refine, refine things. But I think the good news is that, from a land planning standpoint, we can address, I feel like we can adequately address the main concerns, right, that have come up. What we can't address, somebody else can, because it wasn't our mission, is a no-development, do-nothing scenario. But that, I'm not saying that couldn't happen, but that's not what my mission is, to see if we can make work and balance. That's a whole nother model with grants. The bottom line is, this property is owned by others, it's other people's money, you know, that'll be used to develop this, it's other people's property at this point. They, you know, those folks are looking to do something here and realize value out of their property. So that's kind of what we're getting into next, is really balancing that. So these, we're digging into some numbers and just sort of testing some models and seeing what the outcomes are, which is informing what might be a best practice or a wisest approach. We are going to talk to the community this Thursday night, again, with Veronica, at a town hall-style meeting, to get their input and give the same update, you know, with this kind of straightforward information, and then we'll be getting more into developing concepts and options, and getting feedback on those, right? And then, you know, coming up with a strategy for you, and developing a preliminary and final, you know, plan for this, which ultimately would define the sort of potential conditions of an approval or proffers and things that need to be done to move this project forward, potentially to a rezoning level. And then after that, it's finding partners, you know, that would obviously, you know, make this, put wheels on this bus, right? Whether that's a partnership between the city and VDOT and developers, or whoever. So, I mean, here's the gist of it, I think I mentioned that, we're trying to balance and create benefits, we're trying to mitigate impacts, reduce and/or eliminate impacts, and increase benefits for all these groups. I think I said that enough. And so, that's really all this is about, and trying to do it in a way that creates some lasting value for the community. So again, next step coming up Thursday, we're going to dig into this a little bit more with the neighborhood and the community, and we're hoping for some good, honest, and realistic feedback at that meeting.
Are you open for questions now, or we want to?
Yeah, we went a little long, didn't we?
Let me just start one off, and I'll go right down the line with everybody. The owners of this property, can we, the owners, the owners, if they want to develop, can we stop them from doing that?
No. There is a, there's a buy rate scenario, which is basically 281 units, and they can develop that.
Okay.
And so ultimately, yeah, this is, this is about, does that serve the community at large or not? Okay? Versus potentially negotiating another solution that benefits more folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, I'll give the floor to you on the questions you may have. No question?
Well, I want to process it and take some really good looks at the information you provided, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just, it was evident to me maybe, that there was really opposition to not making 581 easy accessible. You know, when we talk about economic development and no, but strip all 581, I'm, how do you make that happen?
So that's, one of the key options we're looking at is not connecting 581 to the neighborhood, but allowing, you know, through different traffic devices and things, access from the neighborhood to potentially the commercial parcels that would be up against the interstate, right? So those commercial parcels develop more intensely, would only have direct access, they would have direct access from the interstate, but that access wouldn't go through the neighborhood. That was the difference between the 11,000 trips and the 5,700 trips. And that 5,700 would change based on how much neighborhood commercial we have and the density of the residential, right? But what we're trying to do is sort of have our cake and eat it too, right? So those connections from the neighborhood to those commercial areas, say it was a destination restaurant or hotel or whatever, would potentially be sort of one-way access? We're looking at that now, how do we do that? But that would mean that then they'd have to go down the interstate and circle back through the next interchange and come back through there. So that's a different scenario, but we're looking at, you know, if we can do that, and it looks like we can. Now, the only caveat is if VDOT would disallow that, and we've looked into that and have been told that there's no rule, you know, that, that, you know, that that couldn't happen. But it may potentially, and we're looking into this, affect other funding sources like SmartScale, right? So we need to, we need to consider that. This guy does smart-scale evaluations for projects quite a bit, so he knows what the requirements are. So anyway, so far, that looks like a viable solution and potentially a best practice, but that doesn't mean that the trips that were potential from the interchange are a complete disaster. They're mitigatable, they're workable, but it comes with, you know, further down the road, literally further down the road, requirements for infrastructure improvements, right, to deal with that overall, which could be a can of worms for you. To deal, to deal with that overall, which could be a can of worms for you all and the developer, right? So potentially isolating that uh, is, you know, is, um, is, is smart, but you know, $50 million or so, you know, it's an expensive interchange. We use the standard VDOT methodology to develop the cost estimates and escalation and all that. That's a, that's a, that's a tough nut to crack in a performa, you know? So that would mean that those upfront parcels would have to be something that's going to generate a lot of money, right? So anyway, so that's all in play here in terms of how various um, performas, you know, balance sheets could potentially work out for this site.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. Um, one of the things you mentioned in the master plan was this, uh, this 16 door-to-door. Um, and my question is, those that you did talk with, were they actual residents who are property owners or were they renters in the community?
About split 50/50, all from the neighborhood.
Okay.
Uh, and it was about 50% renters, 50% property owners. The property owners were multi-generational property owners in the main, families that have been there for some time.
And what were your span of the neighborhood that you spoke with?
Uh, what, was your neighborhood?
Uh-huh.
Predominantly Ferland, the neighborhood, and also Melrose, probably.
And so you only did 16?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But that's because we've been, we're doing so many focus groups and, and public meetings and so forth.
Okay. And also you mentioned, I was looking for it under the traffic, uh, or the transportation piece, um, where you, you mentioned whether a roundabout or four-way stop sign. Uh, I had a little concern with that, whichever way you went with the, uh, whichever plan you went with, if you came into the neighborhood, is because of the way Andrews Road is set up and although, and you know, there's a school there and with children trying to go to either Eureka Park or go over to Mcatten Park, I would be more concerned about safety in that area of where Nineteenth Street and Andrews Road comes together.
Yeah, there's, uh, there'll be a, different ways to configure that and I think, I mean, that's really getting into the details, right? But that's, that's, uh, thinking about the safety of pedestrians and, and the multimodal environment.
Has conversation been held with regards to that with, with the community at large?
I haven't been in the meetings, but I don't think-
Have they talked about that piece?
That's gone that detailed yet, I don't believe.
That would be a concern.
No, ma'am, not specifically.
Okay.
I think what Bill was trying to illustrate was, you know, with, with a larger trip number, you know, certain scale improvements would be required. One of those which would kind of pull different, the levers of uh, increased traffic safety, uh, increased pedestrian safety, as well as allowing, you know, access and multimodal would be a roundabout. Um, but a roundabout works best at certain volumes.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's in the range. Um, but you get over a certain volume, right? And then the roundabout doesn't work as well.
Yeah, I would just be concerned even in a roundabout, with children trying to cross-
Right.
Uh, for the neighborhoods, how they would go over and a roundabout for, for a way-
The roundabouts are safe and can be very safe and safer. I've, I've, I've designed several of them, I can show you ones that we've done, smaller scale ones in, in communities and they're actually add a lot of safety for pedestrians and so, but we can, we can follow up on the technical.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I could just add, the uh, feedback that we got was very, very clear about focusing on safety with any, and, and improvements to the street grid. We've provided that feedback to the team and so they are looking at very specific ways to address safety issues. And we, we may have more conversation about that Thursday night, but that's definitely a part of their, their strategy.
Good. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Now, that's it then?
Could I just ask a couple quick?
Yeah, question?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for this really great work and, and it's clear to me from some of the findings that you've listened very carefully uh, to residents and neighbors. So that's important. I wonder if you could go back to slide eight, on my plan, it's slide 18, but it's the, all the different concepts in terms of traffic and transportation. Sorry about that. Uh, that one, that one. So my question was on the lower, the lower drawings, I guess on all of them, on concepts one and two and three, are those all, with the exception of the interchange, how many of those would be new roads and how many are existing?
Okay.
Do you highlight those in some way on there?
Yeah, um, potentially, but basically uh, on these diagrams, the only existing road is Andrews and, you know, Nineteenth here and then the Top Hill Drive, right? Um, road, you know, assuming we're going to preserve that neighborhood, which we have to because it's their private property, we can't do anything with it. So so y'all know, you can't, you can't take people's property, anybody can. So those, but everything else would be new, new roads, right? So that's what we're looking at is a proposed road network. Now Top Hill, I think the road network is here, you know, if you follow my line, it comes around like this, there's kind of two roads that are in here and we're, you know, we're, we're not, we're not using those in these concepts.
Okay. Then if you could go back to, so, so there would be significant infrastructure-
Oh, yeah.
-that would be required.
Any kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's a big, uh, big question and perhaps opportunity, but it's a big question because then um, you're not only increasing traffic into the area, but you're increasing roadways and-
You, you would be, um, and there are different models of how we, we do this typically. I mean, there's a hierarchy of, it's not all, you know, four lane roads, obviously, it's a hierarchy of street type, you know, typologies. And a lot of those, you know, will include integrated stormwater, street trees, sidewalks and all that, you know, very pedestrian scale, you know, uh, you know, calm streets, but you do need some of the, you know, collector streets, you know? These are kind of some of the more of the, you know, this street here and this, and this would be more of a secondary collector.
Yeah.
Right? Where these would be very, you know, pedestrian scale, you know, integrated to the neighborhood kind of streets, right? With, with various setbacks for the, you know, for the, um, you know, residential units and, and things like that. But those would, those, the idea with this plan is that, that, um, the street typologies and the block lengths and how that's done, you have guidelines for that, the city has guidelines for that and we would follow those and really try to create a more sort of intimate, intimate, human scale neighborhood, right?
Right.
So.
Well, I'm, I'm intrigued by the idea of, of limiting the access from 581 if that, if that were a proposal. Um, and, and if, if there was commercial development just on the, just next to 581, that it, the access to that would be very limited and-
Yeah.
-you'd still have the opportunity to protect and enhance the environmental assets that are there.
Yeah.
Which I think is really important.
Right.
Um, I, I really was pleased to hear about the um, the business incubator idea and particularly how that could be beneficial for people who live in, in that neighborhood or, you know, want to start new businesses there. Uh, and I like the, the small family housing options, I think those are all positive. Um, those, those are just some initial thoughts. Um, but the other thing that I'm, I'm really glad to hear you talk about is this whole concept of rebuilding trust and, and how, I would personally be interested in those steps as a council member and as a council. I know you've shared them with staff, but I think, I think for us all to work together in that regard, it's important that we all know what those recommendations are because I think these exercises and these conversations have been about trying to analyze and understand where the broken trust is and how to rebuild that. And part of that is by honoring what people share and I, you very clearly identified in the community engagement what you heard loud and clear and if you dug deeper, what the possibilities are. And I think that's, that's where the opportunity lies for us. Just thank you all for that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
First thing, I want to thank the, the team for the work that they've done and for sharing with you the information they have. As, as said, Thursday they'll be doing the same presentation with the neighborhood, having further conversation with them. We will continue to periodically update you, um, kind of individually anticipating sometime in September-ish kind of timeframe, we'll be back here with a more final or complete presentation where we can begin talking about what's next in terms of recommendations or actions associated with that. I would say for the council members, obviously this was a lot of information to digest at eight o'clock in the evening after a very long earlier meeting. So as you process it and as you digest that and as other questions might come up, please reach out to Chris because we can then get those, any questions you might have to the team so they can provide those answers. Any thoughts or observations you have, get those to Chris and we can start adding those into the mix as well because again, we wanted just to get you up to speed, didn't want to, um, you know, have any actions or anything tonight, just want to get you to that point as well. So appreciate that and with that, that is the briefing, so thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, Bob, and, and I want to uh, thank the citizens for coming out tonight with regards to this and you all see what we're hearing for the first time, so I think we want to make sure as we go, you go with that. And so as the vice mayor was alluding to, the trust factor is important, so, you know, I've heard all kinds of rumors out here that, hey, you all are doing that in the back door and understanding this may happen, that's not what's happening. We've just been briefed tonight and will continue to be briefed and as you will, as we go forward with this. All right, so thank you. All right, all of you that are here for this session, if you can take a break, we've got some other business if you want to listen to it. And then I think many of you signed up to speak, uh, I'm a hearing of citizens, so we welcome that. Mine's, mine had a public hearing.
Yeah, we've had a number of public hearings. And, and, well, actually, it's like we've got one public hearing, which may be this Walker Foundry. Rest are just some action items that are-
Okay. Okay. Yeah. We've got a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right. We're going to get, we're going to get started again. Item number 15 on our agenda tonight, Madam Clerk, is a public hearing. I have a request of Ed Moore, representing Walker Machine and Foundry Company, to vacate a portion of a 20-foot-wide alley that extends southwest from Russell Avenue Southwest along the eastern boundary of official tax map number 1420815 and along the western boundary of official tax map numbers 1420834, 1420833, 1420832, 1420831, excuse me, 1420830, and 1420829, and extending west along the northern boundary of official tax map number 1420828, to terminate at a line perpendicular to the remaining alley extending from the northwest corner of official tax map number 1420828 to the southern corner of official tax, official tax map number 1420815. And there's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
I'll ask a clerk to read the title paragraph.
An ordinance permanently vacating, discontinuing, and closing an approximately 20-foot-wide alley that extends southwest from Russell Avenue Southwest along the eastern boundary of official tax map number 1420815 and along the western boundary of official tax map numbers 1420834, 1420833, 1420832, 1420831, 1420830, and 1420829, and extending west along the northern boundary of official tax map number 1420828, to terminate at a line perpendicular to the remaining alley extending from the northwest corner of official tax map number 1420828 to the southern corner of official tax map number 1420815, as more particularly described here and after, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the City Planning Commission recommends approval on a five-vote vote. And are the Van Brouckums here tonight?
No, it's not. It's not. That's not them.
Who? That's what?
This is Walker.
Well, I got, who's that?
Ed Moore for Walker Machine and Foundry.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? Anybody sign up, Madam?
Not for this matter, no.
Well, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask are there any comments by the City Council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White-Boyd has left the meeting. Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number two is tax exemption request on real property owned by PCC Land Company, LLC, also known as Presbyterian Community Center. There's one ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Roanoke owned by PCC Land Company, LLC, whose sole member is Presbyterian Community Center, Inc., a Virginia non-stock nonprofit corporation devoted exclusively to charitable or benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. All right. Working out the city manager, any comments he'd like to make?
The only thing I indicated is in the report already, just so everyone understands, is that the code in Virginia is very narrow as to what qualifies automatically for this kind of exemption. So this is the process that it sets up to enable folks to petition. And again, these are activities that are nonprofits who the entirety of the operation is benefiting that nonprofit activity. And that's why they made their request and we...
Just one question. I know it says Presbyterian, but is the community center a church?
No.
No.
So if staff could relate this to the nature of the organization, please?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, y'all want to do that or you want me to do it? So...
The director is here.
That would probably be the best.
Karen's here.
Did they just step out or they still?
No, Karen's here.
Okay.
Because I will not do it justice.
Okay. I'm Karen McAlley, Executive Director of the Presbyterian Community Center, and our nonprofit mission is to provide emergency financial aid in a food pantry to at-risk families and children. And we also have an after-school program for the same group.
Great. Thank you. Are there any citizens, Madam Clerk, who signed up to be heard?
No.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Well, I'd had no citizens sign up to be heard, so I'll close the public hearing and ask the council if they have any thoughts or questions or comments. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Present.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes.
We will require a second reading on this ordinance.
I would make a motion that we remove the dispensing with the second reading thereof in the title paragraph so that it could be written as such and it would provide for an effective date.
We can do that without an official motion.
Oh, okay.
We'll do that because it didn't have required five votes.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's going to require a second reading?
Yes.
And that'll, we'll have that scheduled for the July 3rd meeting.
And since we've had the public hearing, it doesn't require an additional public hearing. They'll just be voted on.
Yes.
Now, that, was that because of Mr. Volleson?
Yes, we need a five.
You need a five.
Okay. All right. Item number three. Tax exemption request on real property owned by local environmental agricultural project. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Roanoke owned by local environmental agricultural project incorporated, a Virginia non-stock nonprofit corporation devoted exclusively to charitable or benevolent purposes on a nonprofit basis, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for the comments he may have.
Same, same sort of discussions before. Obviously, I think everyone is familiar with LEAP and its mission and what it does with these, with these properties. And again, similar to before, this is really necessary because the code in Virginia is written so narrowly that though a nonprofit, though performing their nonprofit services exclusively at these properties, they don't automatically qualify for that requiring this process and be, and is, is not automatic. It's subject to the hearing as well as judgment by the council.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the clerk of any citizens that have signed up to speak on this matter.
No.
And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item number four is the adjustments of FY 2022, 2023 revenue estimates and appropriation of expenses. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to increase the transfers to Roanoke City Public Schools, reserves for fund balance and contingency, civic facilities, operating expenses for Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, snow removal, public safety overtime, fire temp wages, staff medical contract, fleet sublet vendor, parts, restore Harrison Museum capital funding, transfer to grant fund, transfer to capital after school, and to increase revenue budget estimates for local taxes and other revenues, including the American Rescue Act of 2021 interest, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 general fund and capital projects fund appropriations and grant fund, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager.
So fairly customary in that at the end of the fiscal year, when we budget, we're taking estimates of what we think we're going to receive in revenue and also expenses. So what this is, is to right-size both what we have actually received or what we expect to receive in revenues and also what is going out in adjust, in expenditures. Just to hit a couple of these highlights, because it's a little bit, I never thought I'd actually have a revenue adjustment because we made more, we received more funds on fleet, on fleet surplus than we had expected. But that just tells you how crazy things are at, because those are fleets, fleet vehicles that we have actually rotated out of our inventory and are selling. Typically, those sell out at surplus rates. Those actually sold higher as an example. But we also actually have realized less revenue from real estate than we had anticipated from the budget. But then we received more revenue than we had anticipated from sales tax as well as from the prepared food and beverage tax. That's not surprising because in both of those, we had estimated fairly conservatively, not knowing how recovery was going to actually occur to, based on what was going on with COVID. As was noted earlier in the discussions that Brent had provided, you're seeing some of our categories consistently perform slightly lower than what we had anticipated. So likely, in the next budget year, we'll be adjusting those as we go forward. And as mentioned, of course, we didn't budget as revenue any interest earned on ARPA. And that was 1.0, almost 1.7 million that we have received off of that. All of that revenue is offset by the expenditures. So 2.1 additional, 2.1 million additional will go to the schools by virtue of the formula. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge will receive another 187,000 by virtue of the formula. And then the rest cover things as were mentioned in the, in the reading of the caption, which includes public safety overtime and temp wages, fire temp wages, and some other items that are on there, and the items that we discussed during the American Rescue Plan Act funding tied to the interest. So all of that is encapsulated in this piece as kind of one of those year-end steps that we do in order to set, right-set the, what we had estimated with which we actually ended up with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the clerk of any citizens signed to speak.
No, sir.
All right. Well, now I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues, have they do have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number five is an award of submitted bid for a 60-year air rights lease for installation of a pedestrian crosswalk over South Jefferson Street Southwest. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance accepting the bid of Carillion Medical Center, a Virginia non-stock corporation, to execute an agreement for the lease of air rights with the city of Roanoke, Virginia, to lease air rights across a portion of South Jefferson Street Southwest for the construction of a pedestrian bridge and crosswalk to connect real property owned by Carillion Medical Center located at 1906 Bellevue Avenue, Roanoke, Virginia, Southeast to real property owned by Carillion Medical Center located at 217 South Jefferson Street Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, authorizing the city manager to execute the air rights lease and take such further actions and execute such further documents as may be necessary to implement, administer, and enforce the air rights lease, rejecting any other bids, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Mr. Cowell for any comment.
Yeah. The only, the only thing I'd add here is we don't do this very often because we don't very often have sort of pedestrian enclosed bridges, if you will. They're actually above the street, which is what this is. So this is a part of Carillion's upgrades that they're doing and will connect the new tower that is under construction with a facility across the street, which is also under construction. And so that is, and we have to go through a process where we extend that opportunity for folks to bid on it. Obviously, in this case, we received a one bid and certainly do recommend that we proceed. There are provisions within the agreement, the lease agreement, that if for some reason the bridge needs to be removed, it will be removed by Carillion. It's not something that we will incur the expense associated with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask a Madam Clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard to speak on this matter?
No, no citizens.
I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. We're now down to the hearing of citizens upon public matters. And let me state, the city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council. or report to the council. Madam Clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes, we have about 12.
All right, can you call them in order?
Sure. Our first speaker is Teresa Gil Walker. And following her will be Gary Sandman. I know. Just setting it up so I can read it. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Council. As a member of the Friends of Evans Springs, I would like to read this statement. Urban green spaces are reported to foster a diverse range of social benefits that can improve the health of city dwellers by combating urban illness, specifically lowering exposure to air pollution to reduce respiratory illnesses. According to the Roanoke City 2040 Plan, page 11, Roanoke recognizes the need for more thoughtful land development, that outdoor recreation is vital to the regional economy, and policies for outdoor recreation focus on protecting natural assets. Roanoke City 2040 Plan, page 63. Trees provide an array of services including water absorption, air filtration, temperature control, as well as aesthetic benefits. Roanoke City 2040 Plan, page 57. Water source, water resource management. While most of the increased rainfall can be attributed to the changing weather patterns, flooding is exasperated by increasing impervious surfaces, surfaces like parking lots, causing runoff to concentrate much faster into drainage systems and natural water courses, leading to higher peak flows and flooding. We recognize the gravity of this situation before us, we hope and trust that you do too. In the context of the travesty of the urban renewal and residual distrust that still permeates the African-American community 50 years later, we believe the decisions made here related to Evans Springs will be the key factor in establishing trust or forever losing the confidence of the African-American community. We, the Friends of Evans Springs, propose protecting this area and its natural state as a city-owned natural park, an urban green space with walking and biking trails and extending Lick Run Greenway to Fair Lake, Fairland Lake via boardwalks. The Sierra Club recommends Evans Springs be developed as a nature park with boardwalks, adding interpretive signage, a nature center, and concludes by saying this, this wetland can be turned into an accessible attraction that enhances the surrounding neighborhood, preserves native plant species, and provides a wildlife habitat. According to the Lick Run Watershed Master Plan, the Evans Spring area should be prioritized for preservation and repairing buffering, and the economic and ecological benefit is likely to outweigh the restoration and flood mitigation if this land is developed. Thank you. The next speaker is Kate Woolley.
Gary. Gary Sandman.
Oh, Gary.
Gary Sandman?
Yeah. All right, yes, sir, come along.
Yeah, I'm Gary Sandman, I'm the executive director for Ploishare Peace Center. I want to thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I've never been to a city council meeting, so this is very interesting, exciting for me. I've got a short statement from the Ploishare Board, and it's about the Roanoke City Climate Action Plan. At its October 2021 meeting, the Roanoke City Council unanimously adopted a resolution expressing the need for emergency action regarding climate adaptation. We understand that a draft of a climate action plan will come before the council in August for a vote. We support the climate action plan and applaud the city for this plan. We hope you will vote it in. In 2017, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the Nonpartisan National Association of Cities with populations over 30,000 adopted a resolution highlighting the need for a transformation of funding priorities away from war-making and into our communities. The resolution called on the president and Congress to reverse federal spending priorities and to redirect funds currently allocated to nuclear weapons and unwarranted military spending, to restore full funding for community block development grants, and the Environmental Protection Agency to create jobs by rebuilding our nation's crumbling infrastructure, and to ensure basic human services for all, including education, environmental protection, food assistance, housing, and healthcare. Cities and mayors are in a unique position to take leadership in transforming how public funds are invested and used. Cities can take proactive and bold leadership to make sure city funds aren't supporting the arms companies that supply the tools of warfare at the root of the war machine. Ploishare Peace and Justice Center, this year celebrating 50 years promoting just such efforts, this is our 50th anniversary, stands before you today to ask you to adopt the draft climate action plan. Further, we ask that you petition our representatives in Congress to repurpose a portion of the U.S. military budget in order for Roanoke to implement this plan addressing the climate emergency. Local governments can also divest from companies whose products, when used for their intended purposes, serve only to kill and injure living beings. Divestment is an accessible, effective action that enables the public to revoke its consent for supporting wars that channel our tax dollars into continuing forever wars and securing endless profits for arms dealers. A move the money resolution to Congress sends a message to our representatives and the Pentagon that fighting foreign wars and seeking hegemony over all the regions in the world should not be the focus of U.S. foreign policy. This is a statement from the Ploishare Board. I've also got a short resolution, I've got copies, and I'll pass that to the city clerk. And I don't think we're asking for any action, just for you guys to consider this. And I, we do hope that you vote in the plan and, and consider what we've said, we think it's important. Thanks.
Hi, good afternoon, I'll try to be quick because I think we're all tired, but I'm here representing the Bus Riders of Roanoke advocacy group. What I'm here to talk about today is how infrastructure represents Roanoke and what it says to other people. Infrastructure is something that is done specifically to, by a government to support the population of a city, and as such, it sends a powerful message about who a city is for and what it's supposed to do for its citizens. Specifically, the infrastructure I'm talking about today is the new bus station down on Third Street. The new bus station is dry, it's air-conditioned, and it's long-lasting, unlike the trailers we had before while it was still in development. This sends a powerful message, and it says that Roanoke is for everyone regardless of the transportation need that they might have. We have made more steps in this direction that reinforce that message, such as Metroflex, which says that Roanoke is there for you on Sundays and after 8:00 PM. Also, the new operators contract, which happened several months ago, but I still think is worthy of mentioning, it says that Roanoke is there for its bus drivers and its employees. But it is important that while these steps are made and are publicized and celebrated, that we not stop there. We need to make sure that for the disabled and for the pregnant and for the unhoused, Roanoke needs public benches, something that is conspicuously absent from the outside portion of the new bus station. For the busy and the late and the tired, Roanoke needs to have more frequent service. And for the sustainable, the environment-conscious, and our children, Roanoke needs electric vehicles and solar panels on city property. Roanoke is a beautiful and vibrant city, one that I and others like me have chosen to live in, we have made the active choice to move here because we think it is a good place to start our lives. I want you to join us in making a future where Roanoke truly is for everyone and says that with its whole heart.
The next speaker is Darnell Wood, following Richard Rife, or Fife?
Three minutes, that shouldn't take me that long. Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of city council, and Mr. Cowell. Last year, or year before last, you all approved the renaming of the basketball courts in Washington Park from Ricky Renee Wright Basketball Courts. You all have also recently allowed Cobb Avenue to be named after Reverend R. Wilkerson, which the family, I tell you, it was great. But in May, I went up to the upper portion of Washington Park, there was a water fountain there. I went over to it, it was right in the vicinity of the basketball courts, and the water fountain was not working. I pressed the pedal and there was no, or pushed the button and there was no water coming out of it. I wrote, I actually called, pardon, the Parks and Recreation, and they said they will ask two things. Number one, get it repaired, or number two, put one of the more up-to-date water fountains like the one that's up on the Greenway, which is over near Lucy Allison Middle School. And the lady said she'll get back with me. She did call me back and said she had got the message to the right people. On yesterday, I went to that same location in Washington Park, and I sent you all an email and everything, and water fountain had been completely removed from the location. And this morning, I did get a email from Mr. Mike Clark, and I tell you, it was fairly disappointing. Not only was it removed, I know the Washington Park pool was there. They said that the line that was at, going to the pool also supplied the water to the water fountain. Not only was removed, the meter was moved as well, and it said the cost to put the line back in place was $5,000. I was livid. I was livid. I talk about all the time how we do not get the things that we need. We put a new basketball court, or renovated basketball court in place, five of them, to be exact, in that area of Washington Park. The pool is gone, there's nothing over there at the upper part of Washington Park but the basketball courts. And all of a sudden, through whatever proper or improper, improper planning that went on removing the pool, no one thought about keeping the water line for the children to go over there to drink out of. I have talked to Mr. Cowell, I know you all have been busy today, and he said it will be taken care of. But for Mike Clark to say, we can wait to 2025, we can't wait to 2025. And Mike is usually a good guy to, to do things, but I'm just asking, please follow up on this and make sure it's done. Those children can't wait to 2025 to have a cool drink of water when there's no shade over there whatsoever. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you all.
Just, just so y'all know, I shared this with Darnell earlier at the meeting, he made reference to it, so with his email and then the conversation today was the first I had heard of, of this issue. So apparently in June is when the staff at the Parks Department learned that indeed it was on the same water line as was the pool, which is not customary, usually our drinking fountains are on their own independent line. Knowing what I know today, yes, it, it will be repaired and fixed. I told Darnell, we'll have to figure out what that timeline is because literally a whole new water line has to be put in, so to figure out what that is, and I'll, I'll circle back with him on what that is, but it will be, it will be replaced before 2025 or 2026, whatever, whatever it was. Yeah, hopefully, it'll just be dependent on how long it takes to actually get it connected and stuff, so.
Hopefully by the end of the summer.
Well, it may be the end of the summer unfortunately because a water line has to be put in, so we have to see how long that will, that will actually take, but.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager, city clerk, and city attorney, thank you for the chance to come speak to you tonight. Wanted to speak about development at Evans Spring and the master plan that we just heard. Commend you all for your work, often thankless, I think, takes lots of time. Commend the consultants for doing the good work that they're doing, particularly the community engagement consultants that I would have interacted the most with, but seem to be doing a good job. As I was sitting here trying to figure out what I might like to say, a scenario came to my mind, and that was to imagine ourselves back 70 years ago, whatever the math of that is, as city council and the citizens are considering the, the new urban renewal plans for Roanoke. It seems to me a, a, an amazingly rosy picture would have presented about what this would do for Roanoke back then. Would only take this many streets, you'd have this many jobs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the net effect of that was, there were some jobs that came, I imagine, working at the Burgling Center or something, if you see what I mean by way of that. The traffic did increase, as they would say in there, but the downside was horrible, and I do not think that that was properly forecast and made known to the larger community at the time that our leaders were considering that. And that is just one of the principal parts of our history that complicate this decision. So what I want to say is, I like very much what I heard Ms. Fleming say, one of the community engagement consultants. It sounds very much like what I've heard and I think other Friends of Evans Spring have heard from people in that neighborhood, in that community, and, and the larger public as well. Please prioritize what she was saying in terms of the plan that you all approve, and the plan, development plan, whatever that comes before you. I don't know what that's going to look like, but it seems to me she was giving you a pretty clear indication of what that community wants. To my way of thinking, we owe the black community. We have a great debt to them in terms of how we've treated them in the past, it is not right, we've not made it up to them, and we put through some major development over there that kind of displaces a lot of people or whatever, is horribly, horribly wrong. So please do not do that, attend to what they're saying, and act on that. Thank you very much.
The next two speakers, Deborah Carter and Jenny Fife.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna piggyback off of what Richard just said. We just celebrated Juneteenth. And if these consultants, the ones doing the business plan part of it, if they had actually been listening to the voices of the community, they would have not come back with those drawings, because every single one of those drawings has nothing to do to ensure that their voices matter.
Jenny had to go.
Okay.
Save you some time.
Uh, thank you. Brandy Campbell.
Sorry, I'm a little shorter. I'm a little emotional tonight, but I'm excited to just share my thoughts with you for a second. I'm switching it up and talking about gun violence tonight, as June is gun violence awareness, and we just celebrated the sixth anniversary of, well, we didn't celebrate, but we, it's been six years since my brother died. My youngest brother was murdered six years ago on June 15, 2017. He was 17 years old when he was shot and killed by members of the Rolling 30's gang. holes in the vertical blinds of a window. I've been there every June 15 since to lay flowers, and the bullet holes are still there. I think about the couple laying in bed that night, and they were awakened to gunshots coming in inches above their heads. They were awakened to shards of glass hitting their faces and not knowing what was happening. How many times do you think they ask, "What if?" I think about the man who stepped out onto his courtyard balcony to enjoy the night air, and instead, he was calling 911 to say there's a young kid running for his life, being chased by a man with a gun, and another bigger man running with a gun. How many times does he ask himself, "What if?" I think about the young lady that called 911 after she heard a soft knock on her window. That soft knock she heard was my brother collapsing on the brink of death. I think about how she was scared to testify because she was scared and afraid of gang repercussions. How many times does she ask herself, "What if?" I can tell you, my family asks ourself, "What if?" every single day. What if we had done or said one thing differently? What if they had not pulled the trigger that night, and they pulled the trigger over and over? But tonight, I ask you, what if we repaired the bullet holes in that apartment building? What if we repaired all the bullet holes in our community? Would it help to repair the holes in our hearts? I know it's a private apartment complex, so I'm not asking city council to repair the property. I'm simply asking you to think about how many bullet holes there are and how would you feel if it were your home riddled with bullet holes? I took these pictures this past Thursday. The bullet holes are still in the apartment complex. There are three bullet holes in the vinyl siding, and there are two in the vertical blinds. This year, the vertical blinds have silver duct taped on them, covering up the bullet holes, but the bullet holes are still there six years later. So in honor of my brother and everyone that has lost their lives, I just want to say, "What if? What if things were different? What if things were better? What if we loved each other just a little bit more?" Thank you.
Rosemary Ann St. Jacques.
Thank you for allowing me to talk to you all. I feel a lot of appreciation, and I feel a lot of hope. Mr. Wilson, I heard you say these beautiful words. What about that spring behind that caretaker cottage? That was really meaningful to me. And Joe, you're always there, and you always give away for us all to be involved, and let us feel proud of that, and I think it's because of you that I wanted to be involved, and I really appreciate that. And Mayor Leah, I feel appreciation for your heart. I feel appreciation for the consultants that came and studied Evan Springs. Chuck and Veronica and Cheryl, they were feet on the ground. Chuck got his loafers wet in the spring. They really, really did get community input, and I appreciate that. The hope that I feel is of the future. I realize what a huge impact this could make. I realize that urban renewal didn't just happen in Roanoke, it's happened all over the country. And so when we make an example of not only protecting our environment but rebuilding that trust, that pattern's going to go out into the entire country, and I feel proud of that. When I looked at the 2040 plan and I found out that we wanted to regain that trust, I felt great. Well, we wanted to get more trees and get more parkland. I thought, "Great." And you know what? We've got Evan Springs, and we can make that happen. Thank you.
The next speaker is Frida Catcart.
First of all, I want to say thanks. You guys have a hard job to do. I got to take a break, go home, change, take my dog to a walk, have dinner, and come back. So I know this has been a long day for you all. But I did watch Evan Springs' presentation online, and I did sign up in case I felt moved to come back, and I felt it was really important to come back, because what I saw deeply concerns me. I've been spending a lot of time in the Evan Springs community and attending the meetings, and they have these awesome videos and these presentations from these people from Virginia Tech that explain comprehensively why you must leave the tree canopy in Evan Springs alone. And I'll tell you this, there are funds available. Right now, we can't proceed as things are normal, because they're not. They're so abnormal that Allstate and State Farm have pulled out of California, and they're getting ready to pull out of Florida. Check your home policies and see if you're covered for as much as you used to be. It's like this hidden fee that's being passed along, and there are lawsuits being filed all over the place against the fossil fuel industry. And just in April, there was a Supreme Court ruling saying, mandating that the court cases go to state courts, which move faster than federal courts, to hold the fossil fuel industry responsible for the destructions that's happening to local communities. And this is the important part for you all as council, as your responsibility to the people of Roanoke. You can't trust on insurance companies to pick up when tragedy hits our communities. You're gonna need to lawyer up, and you're gonna need to take it to them where the money is, because the money's sitting there, and that's important. At the same time, there's money coming from the federal and state government going, "Oops, we made a mistake. Here, fix it, because it's coming through the board that I serve on." And we gotta try and get it out there as quickly as we can. And saving mature trees and woodlands is much better than planting trees. We need them now. We need to protect what we have now. We can't wait. We must respond. And capitalism is moving faster. And if you look at those videos of the Evan Springs site, you will find a really powerful video about the urban heat island and what would potentially happen if you take out those woodlands and what will happen in northwest where there's already gun violence and people suffering. When you make their cooling costs go up, and heat is the most dangerous natural effect or disease or thing of climate change. When you take those trees out, if you took them out, it would drive up everybody's cooling costs, they're not going to be able to afford it. And they live in a neighborhood where they don't feel comfortable opening their windows. They're going to bake. You can't allow that to happen, and you've got to ask the planning department and your consultants to do a better job than the presentation that I saw. It is unacceptable, and we deserve more for our money, and I really appreciate it, guys. Have a good night.
Bob Peckman, followed by Kristen Peckman.
Thank you all for hearing me. Roanoke City is nationally recognized as a livable place and a great place to raise children, and I don't think anybody could make a presentation which would show you how valuable that is, what the true economic value of that is. Aside from all of the environmental reasons, this site is a rare opportunity. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, it's a once-period opportunity to build a park like none other. We have many parks in this area. You guys have done such a great job with Carvin's Cove and with Mill Mountain and the Greenways and all of the city parks. This is an opportunity to build one different, which would be a place for 10-year-olds to play. I remember when I was 10 and could walk up the street and down Mrs. Blovhill's driveway and into the woods, and this is a place where kids could play in the woods, in the water. It's just such a great opportunity that Roanoke should invest in and spend the money and do it, and have something which I think would return more than any of these guys can put in their presentations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of city council, for the opportunity to address this issue. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to actually go down, feet in the water, and see that beautiful lake at Evan Springs. I understand you have seen some pictures of it earlier today. This is a treasure. This is something you cannot destroy. You simply cannot destroy. It must be left in its natural state. Now, it's possible to extend the Lick Run Greenway as a park, but these other proposals, streets, housing, development, that's not going to pay off. You won't get a great economic benefit. You have a climate plan. You need to think about climate. We have climate change. It's real. So it's essential that you preserve this last little bit of green space that you have in the city of Roanoke. Development can occur as it is going to occur in southeast. Development can occur on existing developed properties. You see where many businesses go under at Valley View Mall. You just can't keep developing. You've got to preserve the little bit of wonderful green space that you have and that will help save the climate. Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further business to come before the council, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.